Let's all put our hands together for these kids. Thank you. Now with that said, can we all rise while we honor and salute America? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and true to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Ms. Fattacante, here. Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Larry.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mayor Caulfield.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Seven present.
The first agenda item is a spotlight on excellence for the summer reading program. I'll read this communication. To Superintendent Chris A. Scott, superintendent, from Gina Franco, Deputy Superintendent, Spotlight on Excellence. This month's Spotlight on Excellence presentation on Wednesday, October 7th, 2009, will feature the third year of the grades K through eight summer reading program. The Lowell Public School Department values the contributions of its partners in the education of our children. This summer, many of our partners, parents, guardians, and caretakers of students in grades K through eight were invited to support young learners in extending and enriching their literacy skills by encouraging daily summer reading. Our students were challenged not only to read each day, but also to maintain a summer reading log of their thoughts, feelings, and ideas. A total number of thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty-eight books were read, and all participating students received a certificate. Put your hands together for those thirteen thousand books. As the mayor and the school committee, we would like to thank the parents, the community partners, and staff who supported this effort. I would also like to thank the Lowell School Committee for its enthusiastic support of this initiative. Most especially, however, I would like to offer my congratulations to all students who took advantage of this opportunity to enrich their lives through reading. I'm certain that the stories read and lessons learned through engaging literature added enormously to their summer experience. I will now list the schools who participated. And after I finish giving you the listings of all the schools, you'll put your hands together. The Bailey School, the Bartlett School, the Butler School, the Daly School, the Greenhouse School, the Laurel Lee Alternative Program, Lincoln School, McCallum School, McAvene School, Moody School, Maury School, Merklin School, Potatville School, Pinearts School, Riley School, Robinson School, Shaughnessy School, Stockloser School, Sullivan School, Wang School, and the Washington School. Put your hands together for those schools. And now Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Gina Franco, will recognize those students.
Thank you, Mayor Caulfield. Children, as I call your names, will you come forward to receive your prize this evening? Each child will receive a $25 gift certificate to Barnes &amp; Noble so they can continue their reading. From the Bailey School, Juan Carlos Serano Jr. Alexa Carolyn. And James McBreen. From the Bartlett School, Justine Newt. Anthony Piso. And Daniela Ace Vega. From the Butler School, Jane Lee. Ryan Dion. And Sharice Levine. From the Daly School, Madeline Penn. David Perez. And Rebecca Young. From the Greenhouse School, Ethan Rios. Nicholas LaFever. And Chen Ren. From the Laurel Lee Alternative Program, Jasmine Torres. Luis Felice. And Gabriel Vargas. From the Lincoln School, Selena Chow. Someone Tepi Vet. And Finn Cougar Kane. From the McCallum School, Alex Reyes. Jasmeen Dejano. And Isabella Brito. From the McAvene School, Malkizadec Robinson. Ayana Rivera. And Kyle Reardon. From the Moody School, Giovanna Pereira. Gabrielle Rodriguez. And Steve Tavares. From the Maury School, Dylan Foel. From the Maury School, Dylan Foel. Vincent Kim. And Parisha Vaughn. From the Merklin School, Salmonia Forn. And Maya Rivera. And Gekmi Chan. And Gekmi Chan. From the Potatville Memorial School, Cody Bonchon. Kimberly Mai. And Chanda Wallace. From the Pinearts Magnet School, Adriana DeBloy. Joza Belpardo. And Jasmeen Johnson. From the Riley School, Peter Tron. Ray Vasquez. And Elena Hunt. From the Robinson School, Jessica Dupont. Rachel Hunt. And Ratana Heng. From the Shaughnessy School, Michaela Chatenvong. Mitchell Chan. And Emily Johnson. From the Stocklosers School, Zachary Murphy. Botte Luan. And Cornell Grinkley. From the Sullivan School, Janelle Quill. Tracy Yang. And Grace Carolyn. From the Wang School, Brenna Burton. Alexis Martinez. And Danielle Riley. From the Washington School, Rowan Galoney. Sophie Price. And Mitchell Oh. That represents all of our schools. Our special thanks to parents. It is with your support and your discipline and making sure the kids do this work that we have this kind of participation in this initiative. Thank you very much.
On behalf of the school committee and the superintendent, the faculty and staff, I think we owe a great debt of gratitude to Barnes &amp; Noble for sponsoring this program this year. Put your hands together for Barnes &amp; Noble. And there's thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty-eight reasons why we should be happy tonight. Thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty-eight books were read by these students this past summer, and you can't take that away from you. You did a tremendous, tremendous job. Congratulations. Can we have a member of the school committee ask for a five-minute recess? Saw move by John Leahy, seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor of five-minute recess, signify by saying aye. Five-minute recess.
Get a nice shot, guys. Get a nice shot. Nice smile, guys. Nice smile. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Lady Mayor.
Mr. Phil.
Thank you. You say your part? Thank you. Thank you.
Genie, I shook them off some pitches. It was clever. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, June, for your patience.
I love the kids. Are you kidding? That's what we're here for.
Okay, if we can... Is John get back? Yep. I want to thank everyone for their patience. This is a special moment for these students, and it is very easy to see that the parents and the students enjoyed it immensely. Roll call, Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Fattacante, here. Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Larry.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mayor Caulfield.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Seven present.
I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the last school committee meeting by Connie Martin, seconded by Dave Conway. All in favor, signify by saying aye. And opposed, the minutes have been accepted and placed on file. Madam Superintendent, permission to enter.
Thank you, Your Honor. SP and IR Transportation of NH for the amount of $342,000 to amend the existing contract to provide for bus monitors per student's individual education plan. Funding provided by the Education, Special Education Transportation Budget. The Christensen Bus Company for the amount of $10,400 to provide round-trip transportation for one special education student from Lowell to Mass Hospital School in Canton, Mass. Funding provided by the Special Education Transportation Budget. Greater Lawrence Educational Collaborative GLAC for the amount of $19,400 to provide round-trip transportation for one special education student from St. Anne's Group Home in Methuen to CM Collaborative Hurd School in Melrose, Mass. Funding provided by the Special Education Transportation Budget. Safety, Safeway Training and Transportation Services for the amount of $9,000 to provide round-trip transportation for one special education student from Havreau, Mass. to adolescent center in Raleigh, Mass. Funding provided by the Special Education Transportation Budget. American School at Hartford for the DAFT for the amount of $38,500 to provide round-trip transportation for one special education student from the American School at Hartford for the DAFT, Westford, Hartford, Connecticut, to Lowell. Funding provided by the Special Education Transportation Budget. Sea Lynn Chambers for the amount of $10,000 to provide staff training, which will directly benefit teachers by providing, improving their capacity to utilize specific assistive technology instruments for special education students. Funding provided by the Special Education Department Budget Grant Funds. Dorothy Agent Hire MED for the amount of $5,005 to provide consultation and training to special education teachers working with students with cochlear implants and to observe these students as needed to make recommendations related to their individual education plans. Funding provided by the Special Education 240 Grant. Greater Lawrence Educational Collaborative for the amount of $75,000 to provide home-based services, orientation, mobility training, and vocational assessments according to student's special education IEPs. Funding provided by the Special Education Department Budget, Special Education Tuition Account. Hillcrest Educational Centers, Inc. for the amount of $69,005 to provide for the out-of-district tuition costs for one student enrolled and receiving services as outlined in the Special Education IEP. Funding provided by the Special Education Department Budget, Special Education Tuition Account. Sullivan Associates for the amount of $23,918 to provide for the out-of-district tuition costs for one student enrolled and receiving services as outlined in the Special Education IEP. Funding provided by the Special Education Department Budget, Special Education Tuition Account. Middlesex Partnership for Youth, Inc. for the amount of $5,500 to provide workshop training to K-12 staff on topics including safety, wellness, bullying prevention, and cyberbullying. Workshops to social workers and guidance counselors through in-service training sessions will include current trends in school and violence prevention. Funding provided by the Safe and Drug-Free Schools Grant. University of Massachusetts Lowell Songus Industrial History Center for the amount of $34,025 to provide courses to enrich student content understanding and skill development on the American Industrial Revolution in the 3rd, 4th, 8th, and 11th grades. Funding provided by the School Department Local Budget, field trip admissions fees. Keys to Literacy for the amount of $36,000 to provide content teachers in grades 5 through 9 with reading comprehension, writing, and study skills that will support adolescent literacy instruction to meet the established benchmarks and OCOMs articulated in the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Memorandum of Understanding with the Lowell Public Schools in order to avoid state intervention. Funding provided by the DESE K-12 Literacy Grant and the Local Professional Development Account. Teach for Teachers for the amount of $100,000 to provide onsite professional development and literacy instruction and work with our teachers, literacy coaches, and administrators at the Maury for the amount of $50,000, and Merklin Elementary Schools for the amount of $50,000 to meet the established benchmarks and OCOMs articulated in the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Memorandum of Understanding with the Lowell Public Schools in order to avoid state intervention. Funding provided by the DESE School Improvement Grant. Public Consulting Group, Inc. for the amount of $62,500. The Public Consulting Group is to provide professional development to teachers and administrators on the use of evaluation tools to assess the impact of key programs and literacy initiatives on instructional practices and student achievement to meet the established benchmarks and OCOMs articulated in the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Education Memorandum of Understanding with the Lowell Public Schools in order to avoid state intervention. Provided, funding provided by the DESE K-12 Literacy and Title II D Grants.
What's the wish of the body?
Move approval.
Move approval by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Any discussion, debate? Roll call.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven ayes, approved.
Before we move on to memorials, Madam Superintendent, did you have like a bottom-line figure on how much all that money that we just voted on, and is coming from grants and special education?
It's coming from multiple sources. It's coming from grants, it's coming from stimulus money, it's coming from our operating budget, and there isn't a total on this particular report, Your Honor, but there can be one given on this report at another time and on future reports.
The reason I brought that forward, just let the viewing audience know how expensive and where the money is really going to special education and so forth. Thank you.
Most of these particular issues, you're right, Your Honor, pertain to special education issues or school improvement initiatives as outlined by the Department of Education in order to improve our schools, and a lot of that money comes from the Department of Ed telling us specific guidelines on how to spend it.
Thank you. Memorials by Connie Martin. Martha McQuade, sister of Ellen Conklin, Shaughnessy Schoolteacher, daughter of Joan McQuade, retired Shaughnessy Schoolteacher, and the late Hubert McQuade, former principal of the Patacable Memorial School. By committee as a whole, Vibo Fim, 2009 Lowell High School graduate. Stella Iliopolis, grandmother of Lee Ann Cornes, Green Hill School Principal. Michael D. Vincenzi, Lowell High School Social Studies Department Head, and Gail Green, Lowell High School, Bristol. By Regina M. Fattacante. Mark S. Humphrey, brother-in-law of Sharon Crzyak, Assistant Principal, Bailey School, and Dennis Crzyak, Health and Physical Education Teacher at Lowell High School. Francis H. Legrand, wife of the late George Chubby Legrand, a member of a well-known family. By Mayor Edward Caulfield, M. Corinne Scannell, a member of a large, respected family in Lowell. Let us all please rise and dock in chambers for a moment of silence for these great people. Thank you. May they rest in peace.
Thank you. Thank you, Suzie.
Moving on with the agenda. Professional development days, half-day early release, unfinished business, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. I bring this issue back to the attention of the committee as a whole. We were requested to approach the Citywide Parent Council to ask their opinion on the proposal that's in front of the committee for four half-days for professional development for our students. Some members of the committee, as well as the administration, have some concerns over dismissing our students early and child, childcare issues that our parents would have and the inconvenience that that would pose to our families. The Citywide Parent Council voted on September the 21st in support of the proposal, and I've also approached the Boys and Girls Club of Lowell and asked if they could open up additional seats. I do know that the charter school here in Lowell also uses the Boys and Girls Club once a month for similar purposes when they dismiss early for professional development. So, at this time, I just want to bring that information forward to the committee. On the attached original proposal, there were four dates attached, and at this point in time, because we're still doing our homework on this particular issue, I'm not asking the committee to consider, obviously, the October dates, and I would even suggest perhaps if we could think about a January, after January sometime, if that were, in fact, the wish of the committee. But at this time, I guess I'd just like to hear from the committee what other issues they need, feel need to be fleshed out, or if, in fact, we shouldn't proceed down this road any further.
Mr. Leahy?
Sure, thank you. Through you, the Superintendent, could you just remind us, it's kind of been a while, we've been going back and forth on this?
Sure.
What are we talking about for the hours again? So, what's an early release day? Because all the, the high school is one school, but all of our other schools stop and start and stop at all different times. So, how does that?
The parameters of how you define an early release day is that all our children will receive lunch at their schools. So, the time will change, just as it does now. So, our schools are dismissed throughout the system at different times, and that will be the same as well. But all of our students will receive lunch with us before they are dismissed. So, I mean, I can get that information of exactly what time that would be for dismissal for each one of those schools, but that's the, that's the cutoff.
Okay, and then the other question I had, and again, we've been talking about this for so long. What about the idea of maybe the PTOs or somebody? Instead of the kids going home, maybe they could be, they could have some sort of an assembly down in the gymnasium or auditorium, whatever they have in the school?
Right.
And we could arrange, you know, some sort of informational seminar, whether it's fire safety, police safety, whatever, and that way, we're not, you know, the kids don't have to go home. We should look into that to see if that would be a possibility. And again, you know, funding's short, so we, maybe an idea through the PTOs or through the business community or something like that.
Right.
So, I don't know, I can't remember if we brought that up, so.
Madam Superintendent?
Just in response to that, School Committee Leahy, we can look into that, and that's kind of what I want to hear from the committee tonight, of what some issues, what the issues are that you have concerns around this particular topic of half-day release. My understanding from going around to the various schools and talking with teachers about this proposal and administration, what it would mean to them, is that we, in fact, did have this particular half-day release in the past for the lower grades, and as you know, basically as it stands right now, there's not a lot of time in the teacher's contract for, especially our K-8 teachers, to look at their instructional practices because the contract doesn't allow us that time, afford us that time. And we're not in a position necessarily to buy any more time in the contract, just because it's such fiscally difficult times. And, you know, we also appreciate the fact that this would be an inconvenience and perhaps cost families something as well if we were to have four half-day early release. And, you know, this is a way that families can support the schools. Obviously, teachers improving their practice benefits our students, and that's the purpose of it. We presently, our professional development model is to have substitutes go into classrooms and our classroom teachers leave, and there are pros and cons to that model, as there is to every model. A hybrid model perhaps would be a little more balanced, so that we would have, as the original proposal in front of the committee was eight days. Some school districts have ten half-days, some eight, some six. We're down now to four half-days. But with that said, we would still need to have a hybrid model of, you know, some substitutes going into classrooms and releasing our teachers if we only still had the only four half-days. But we do think that even as a pilot, we would just ask the committee to consider it if it was after, if we didn't start till after the new year began, maybe, you know, two half-days this year, see how it logistically works. To the extent that the school department could be responsible for all childcare issues after that dismissal time, I'm not sure, Mr. Leahy, you know, logistically. I can't sit here tonight and say that we are able or have the capacity to provide that service. So, if that's one of the conditions that you would be comfortable with to make this happen, I wouldn't be able to guarantee that tonight. You know, we can definitely approach the parent-teacher associations and ask that, and we also will be approaching other community groups as well, who already provide childcare, to offer this service. But, you know, I do think that it's important for us to look at this as an option. When we look at our test scores, especially in English Language Arts, they've been flat for too long, and so a superintendent asks the question, why? What else could we tweak? What else could we change to attempt to move our scores? And this is one area, professional development, and to have a block of time, four times a year for our teachers at this level would be most helpful.
Okay, but, and I get that. What's the plan right now, though? Just to let them go home? We don't really have anything concrete with the Boys and Girls Club then, right?
No, right now, we, right now, as it stands, we would be asking families to take care of childcare.
Right, okay. All right, well, I mean, that's fine, I understand that. I'm just saying, yeah, we could look at other, if we're going to investigate sending kids to the Boys and Girls Club?
That was just one example of an outreach that we've done.
All right, so that's all I'm saying, just give one example of maybe what we could do.
Right.
But, okay, I mean, I'm all supportive of this. I think we, you know, we should have this. But I'd just like to see what the, you know, where the kids are going to go and maybe, obviously, it's late in the, in the game right now, so December, sure, is kind of, that would be a tough target to meet. So, if we're going to go ahead with this for this year, I would think that two dates would be reasonable to give people ample time and all that.
That's my suggestion in the new year. I mean, just so, again, that the committee is comfortable and that we can address the concerns of our families to the extent that we can. Again, it will obviously be an inconvenience. I was pleased that the Citywide Parent Council wanted all four days for professional development for our teachers, and, you know, Connie Martin has been, you know, involved in this conversation, and she suggested we reach out to our parent community that way to ask and get their feedback. And I met with the group before they met and voted, so they were well aware of all of our concerns, because logistically it will be an issue for families. But basically, the issues that we are facing with regards to how we want to improve our district and instructional practices in our classrooms.
Thank you.
Mr. Conway, and then Mr. Leahy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Superintendent. I think the idea, what Mr. Leahy just mentioned, is the two days, I agree with that myself. I think it's extremely important that we do share ideas, and I think too often, our staff doesn't have that opportunity. And even though it just is a couple of days, I think it is important that we do have this professional development. We sit down, and I think it's an opportunity that they share these ideas, they hopefully come up with some solutions and, and some different, different ways of doing things perhaps a little bit better. I think also, if we take a look here, when it says the childcare situation, do we have any idea, and I'm just wondering if this would make any sense if we had some type of a survey that might be done, where what, what percentage of parents or the number of parents might actually need some type of situation like we have over the Boys Club and Girls Club? Because they are, you know, this is a perfect example, perfect example of partnerships in the city of Lowell, and I congratulate Michelle Hayden-Mean stepping forward with the Boys Club and Girls Club, and I'm sure other organizations perhaps will step forward for, for various slots, perhaps maybe CTI, I'm sure would perhaps, perhaps step up to the plate too. But I'm just wondering, what numbers are we going to need? If there's, are there any way that we can predict that?
You know, Mr. Conway, Ms. Dougherty asked the same question, suggested we do a survey of parents in our, in our schools and ask that question. And as you can appreciate, I wanted to bring it to the full committee before we took such action, because that's very labor-intensive for us operationally, that's complex. And we do know that some parents will respond back to us that it is an inconvenience and that they don't have childcare. And I guess, to what extent are we going to be responsible to provide it, when I'm not in the position to say that I can?
Right, I, I know that, but I'm just, I'm just saying if we can get perhaps some type of idea, and again, I think we need to go forward. I, I don't think there's any doubt about that. We need to go forward. I think it's just a matter of how do we work this out so that we can hopefully accommodate as many people as we, many children as we possibly can, in realizing that there's responsibilities on both sides of the fence.
Sure.
So, again, I would be in favor of those two days and, and to go forward and, you know, take a look at this plan and a plan that's going to be hopefully successful all the way around. Thank you.
Mr. Leahy?
Yeah, I don't want to go over all the good points that were said by Mr. Conway and Mr. Leahy, but I think the survey portion that Ms. Dougherty articulated to offline is a good start. I know it's labor-intensive. Also, I think two times next year is imperative, starting and getting notice out to the parents at the particular schools that we're thinking of this for the new year, and letting them know, hey, we're going to, we're pretty much almost in cement by doing this, please start thinking of options for daycare in addition to the survey. You got to get the message out that in January, February, or whatever date we select, that the parents know that this is coming, so they can afford folks who have challenges, be it single-parent homes or even, you know, two-working parent homes, that they can make the adjustments that they need. I think as soon as we get that information out there, we're looking at it for next year, people can start making adjustments to it. Thank you.
Ms. Dougherty, and then Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Your Honor. If I, I just want to be clear, but I think that the Superintendent and I have had conversations, and I think from my perspective, I speak for myself, I'm definitely in favor of doing this, and as, I think I'm echoing my colleagues in that, to me, it's not contingent upon total childcare for all the kids, because we recognize it, we can't do that.
Okay.
But I would like that effort, and if you want to call it a parent survey or a school survey, as Mr. Leahy said, each school is kind of given, do you think your PTO, because some of our schools have very strong PTOs, would they want to get involved and help with this? You know, kind of to just survey our K-8 schools and get a feel, as well as, as Mr. Leahy said, make sure, Mr. Leahy, I'm sorry, make sure the communication gets out there early. So, that's one initiative I think is worth the effort.
Great, good.
But it's not, as I said, my approval of this is not contingent upon that.
Thank you.
Second thing I would also like to see, I like that the original idea was tied into the high school early release days, and I believe when we had our subcommittee meeting on it, it was noticed, it was brought out that March 17th is St. Patrick's Day, which I know in the high school plan, that's when their early release falls. I'm really not comfortable with early release on St. Patrick's Day. We have a, you know, quite a group of people who celebrate on that day, walking around the city, I don't want the kids out early that day. I think it would be, it would behoove us, since we're looking for two dates, to kind of kick this off, you know, after January, to choose another date that would coincide, didn't, don't disrupt the high school too much, you know, I'm looking for something that's other than March 17th, and that we would kick off our early release day with the high school as well, because we have many families that the older siblings are at the high school. And if the high school's off early that day as well, that might help with the childcare dilemma. So, that would be my second suggestion, and I realize I'm speaking for myself here. My third point, and I know we've discussed this, is as we get closer and you know better how you want to, you know, approach this professional development, I'd like us to be in that loop to really see what is the plan?
Sure.
And how do you want to best use, I'm thinking, just off the top of my head, they'd be very school-based?
Yes.
Where we have such little time for our teachers to meet and discuss, you know, math, you know, whether it's all the sixth-grade math teachers, or do a vertical thing, the fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth graders, math teachers get together, however you want to approach it, and I realize there's still research
Yeah.
looking at data to help plan that.
Sure.
But I think it's important for me to feel confident that we are getting the biggest bang for this time off, that we are included in that, once you've got a better plan of how you want to approach it. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think a lot of the issues that have been raised, certainly we've been talking about over time, you know, the, the concerns that this kind of shift raises. You know, I, I am, I find it compelling that the Citywide Parent Council did vote to approve this, because I think they are a significant voice, you know, for our parents here in the city of Lowell. And having listened to the conversation about the survey, I would, with my colleagues' indulgence, like to offer an alternative, given how challenging instituting that kind of a survey is, and recognizing what the real impact of it will be. I mean, we'll have a limited response rate, that, I mean, that's true of any survey and certainly true here. Could I make the suggestion that instead, we really focus what our question is and use our robo-phone, whatever, whatever that is, to, huh? Connect Ed, sure. Robocaller, you know, I guess that has a better connotation. Robocaller, you know, I guess that has a better connotation than the robocalls, but use that power for good. To actually contact all of our families and simply put the onus on our parents to say, if this is, if this is, we're asking your opinion, please call us back, please email us. So that the onus is on our parents to take that move. We're tying up one staff person who's accepting these phone calls and fielding these emails. We'd get a really direct response, I hope, so that those parents who really are, you know, we've got a lot of time and parents can find a lot of solutions. The ones who can't are gonna be the ones who will really self-declare themselves. And then we'll know how to make those connections to Boys and Girls Club or how to make those connections to, you know, any of the other community groups. And we'll have a better sense, and it will really give us an opportunity to hear directly from parents. I mean, from the very beginning, the big thing that I've, you know, my concern in this was making sure that we heard from the families so that we can recognize how big a problem this is. I think it's impossible for any of us sitting in this room to guess, I really do. And I think we'd be far better served to just get to people in their homes, ask this question, and have them tell us. And at the very least, then we can honestly say that we asked every single family's opinion on this before we move forward to make a change. Because I think with a change this profound, we really need to do our due diligence and make that extra effort. And I just think that with the survey, there's a lot that goes on with that. And it is a lot of time, a lot of effort, for not a lot of real communication value, in my mind. And this could really be a way to communicate effectively and offer parents a chance to very clearly and directly communicate back to us.
Perfect.
So I'd offer that as an alternative.
Mr. Conway, you also. From what I gather, the committee is not ready to vote. I'll support this tonight, but take it as a report of progress and look for more. Madam Superintendent?
Just point of clarification. I would like some feedback on Connie's suggestion, if it's all right, Mayor? Because I thought it was a great idea. It just to fill the committee. And then to come back to Mr. Leary's point and concern about getting the information out to parents. If the committee, in what I've heard tonight, it sounds like people are interested in supporting the two half-days. And if part of the message to parents is, this is going to occur or we're thinking about to occur on these two dates, if we're gonna go there, I'm just saying, and if you know now, it might operationally, logistically, and so there's no confusion with our community, to say, okay, these are the two dates in the new year that we're proposing. Do you have a problem or how would you like to handle that?
If I could, I mean, I'd be really comfortable if we were sending out this message that said, this is what's under consideration. March 18th and whatever the other day is.
Yeah, I'd just like, that would be great. It's under consideration and these are the dates.
This is under consideration, these are the dates, so you're aware of them. Please communicate back, you know, via this phone number, this email, or contact your school directly and let us know if, you know, what your opinion is, if you feel, you know, blah, blah, blah.
Perfect.
That's a great point. And to follow with a phone call or email or make sure that the student takes home a communication in writing to the parents because sometimes you can't really contact the parents, they're probably at work, whatever. Madam Superintendent?
So, again, just to move this along, we do have the March 17th date right now that committee member Doherty's asked to move, and I think others feel the same. And if that's the case, we do have probably an April date as well, do you think? Or there's a vacation week? And then we have May 19th on the list. So would it be the wish of the committee for us to find out when the next date at the high school is after March 17th, one? And two, that we use the May 19th date that's presently here? Would that be the wish?
Okay.
All right.
Does it total agree with the committee? So, Ms. Doherty.
I'm sorry, just have a question about that. Does that mean the high school would not be changing the March 17th date? That we would just be finding another date when they have the meeting? Because I would really like the high school not to have the high school kids out early on March 17th. I think both things have to happen at the same time. I think, as Ms. Doherty indicated, downtown Lowell is going to be a very busy place on March 17th. And probably, some people don't realize that. And I just think that the culmination of people walking and enjoying themselves and our high school students descending upon that at the same time, probably not a good situation.
March 18th could be a lot quieter.
March 18th, you can walk anywhere in the city and not have a problem. But on March 17th, I would not agree with that, that we have that date for any kind of release date.
Madam Superintendent?
I'd point of clarification. So is the committee telling me that they're telling the high school that March 17th is not to be an early release day?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
March 18th is a...
I'm gonna make a motion, Your Honor, that we convey to the headmaster that the school committee rejects March 17th as an early release day.
Seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Repose, motion passes. March 18th.
And, Your Honor, it's a safety issue. So the headmaster could pick any other day. It's absolutely just a safety issue for our kids.
All right, Madam Superintendent?
I just wanted to clarify, if it was the will of the committee not to necessarily say March 18th because logistically, I don't know what's involved in that.
Right.
Yes, thank you.
There'll be two days of early release, so that's what we're saying.
Right, thank you.
And there'll be cost savings as well associated with this.
Absolutely.
So, motion to accept the reporter's report of progress by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Fattackati. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's been, the report has been, yes?
Thank you. Are we gonna have, through you to Superintendent, are we gonna meet before we send out the letter and phone call? Or is that just gonna happen?
That was gonna happen tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. But it can be delayed if it's the wish of the committee.
No, you're gonna do it tomorrow?
Sure.
Seriously?
Sure.
All right, are you gonna have a little, what's gonna happen with the, how are you gonna describe the early release day? You're just gonna kinda...
The same as we, the same message that I shared here tonight in a hundred words or less.
It's a cost savings and professional development and all that stuff?
It's an attempt to provide our educators with professional, much-needed professional development in order to improve our schools.
All right.
But I would suggest, and, you know, Madam Superintendent, you can do it whatever way you like, but I would suggest not only a phone call, an email, but have the student bring home something in a written form. So everyone is on the same page, they'll know that this is gonna happen. Because you probably can't reach some parents, they're working or they don't have a computer or they're not home, they didn't answer the phone, so. Yes, Madam Superintendent?
So, would it be acceptable to the committee, then, if we did send out a Connect Ed message and then sent home a paper notice that we have sent home a Connect Ed message on this particular topic?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that way there, no one can say, I didn't know, you know, they all have, you know, so. Okay, and I wanna thank the superintendent and the staff for coming forward with that comprehensive report. Thank you. Public participation, I don't believe there's anyone who wants to step to the podium, so we're gonna move on with the motions. Motion by John Lahey, the superintendent sent a letter of appreciation to Brenda Costello from the committee for all the work she has done over the past few years for the Lowell High School Scholarship Foundation, seconded by Ms. Martin. A little motion, John?
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion basically speaks for itself, but Mrs. Costello should be sent a letter of appreciation. She was there from the start. She raised a lot of money for Lowell High School kids. She's a big part of Lowell High School, still will be. And we really need to convey our gratitude for her dedication. Thank you.
Good motion, John. Anyone else like to elaborate on that motion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Repose, the motion carries. The next motion by Jackie Doherty, requests the superintendent work with city youth providers to develop ways to collaborate and make use of the Rogers School as a community center. Seconded by Ms. Leary on the motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it pretty much speaks for itself. About a year ago in September, we, this committee voted to continue the meetings that the superintendent or her designee had, the former superintendent used to hold with our nonprofit youth providers throughout the city, the Boys and Girls Club, Girls, Inc., the YMCA, those kinds of groups, that we wanted to keep a dialogue going because we are serving the same children. And I guess this motion is just kinda building on that to say, now we've given you, we have a specific focus that, and that is to try to see how we can use the Rogers School as a community center. We have a beautiful gymnasium there, we are gonna have a substation for the police there. Our central office staff obviously will be there. But I'd like to see it, I don't want it shut down and darkened at the end of the workday. If we could have it as a vibrant part of that neighborhood, I think it would be wonderful. I realize in these difficult fiscal times, that might be a challenge. But I think that getting these people together with this goal to come back to us with some recommendations or maybe what are some of the obstacles even, that we as a community can look at how we can make use of that beautiful facility when we're not using it for central office. So it's still part of something that the youth in the city can benefit from. So that's my intention.
Okay, Madam Superintendent, on the motion.
I appreciate the motion. I just want to clarify that the Rogers School gym is used by many, many community groups and it's a beautiful facility and it is used. So I didn't want the community to have the impression that it sits in darkness because, and through to Assistant Superintendent Lang, if he wants to comment on it, but that's a very, very popular gym. And the community has still full access like it always did.
So it is being used presently as a...
It will continue to be.
Right, right.
Right, that's my understanding. It's a very popular gym.
And I would imagine, Madam Superintendent, there's a cost associated with utilizing the gym and the custodian and so forth?
Yes, as per the school committee policy.
Right, okay. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Repose, the motion carries. Motion by Jackie Doherty, requests the superintendent make recommendations regarding the use of biodegradable throwaway materials in our school food program rather than styrofoam, as well as the potential benefits and drawbacks of switching back to reusable items wherever possible. Seconded by...
I'll second.
Ms. Lahey.
Thank you, Your Honor. As my colleagues know, we are continually looking at ways to save money that doesn't impact the education of our children. And I was dismayed to find out we're using styrofoam because it never degrades. It just goes out with our trash. And so the city pays a fee, although I don't think it weighs very much. But I heard we're throwing out like three million pieces of styrofoam, these styrofoam trays, every year. And during the Folk Festival, as you know, we use these corn-based throwaway products. I don't know if they're more or not. So that's, my motion is saying, let's look into, if we can be more environmentally responsible and perhaps save money, let's do it. And that's really where the last piece of the motion comes in. We, at one time, and I'm sure that many of my colleagues, maybe when you were in school, I know certainly when I was, we used trays that were washed, they went through the dishwasher. And not all of our schools, I understand, have dishwashers, but many of them do. And I don't know if there's some kind of hybrid we could do, where we use biodegradable throwaway materials when we have to, but maybe go back to some reusable materials. I'm just looking for some suggestions and research as we continue to look at ways to provide our children with a healthy lunch and save money if we can. Thank you.
Ms. Fattackati?
Thank you, Your Honor. I actually had this motion on the agenda a year ago. And Mr. Lang did provide us with a report regarding all of these items that are here again tonight. I'm gonna ask Mr. Lang to explain what he explained to us a year ago. But I also want to remind the committee that when we're thinking about trays, if schools do not have high-powered dishwashers, we should not be using trays in those schools. We are coming into a flu season where H1N1 is going to be flooding our school system. That's the last thing we want to do, is have a tray that is not sanitized properly. So I would say that that's not what we want. If a school does not have the capability, then that's absolutely the wrong idea. Because we need to keep our kids safe from getting the flu bug. But I'm gonna ask Mr. Lang to tell us what he told us a year ago about what the situation is.
Thank you. And I will, in talking to Mrs. Doherty just last week about this, too, I'll put another report together for you at the second meeting in October. And I did start to look into, since talking to you, the pricing involved. Pricing is a key element. The biodegradable, reusable, recyclable trays are three to four times the cost of the styrofoam trays. The other issue, again, and even just as I started talking to people internally, was the fact that a lot of our schools don't have active dishwashers. Even the new Maury and the Stockloso, we just didn't have them built with dishwashers because we were using trays. But I'll have a full report together for you for the second meeting in October, our next meeting in October. That'll give you a little breakdown of what, and again, it's just a decision for the committee to make, costs involved. And then we'll even start, I won't have this done by the end of October, but we'll take a look at the existing kitchens that have dishwashers, things of that sort. What do we take to get them back up to speed again? And you can take a look at that cost involved. But I can do that for the second meeting in October.
I know Mr. Lang will bring back a thorough report. But also Gunther Willenstein, our recycling coordinator, knows more about recycling than anyone in the world. And if we contact him, too, he can certainly give us information on this particular issue. All, Ms. Lahey, why are you laughing?
Jim wanted me to make the trays edible, so. You know, you put corn chowder in a bread bowl, we could do something with the trays. But seriously, through you to Mr. Lang, would this be part of, are we getting a plan from the food?
So wouldn't this... Yeah, we're gonna be reconvening, this wasn't on the agenda. We're gonna be reconvening the probably Facility Finance Subcommittee. I'll talk to Mr. Leary probably the middle of October or so, so that you'll actually have a report out at your October meeting. But we're going through all the September data now on participation and things of that sort. I hadn't planned on looking at this, but I certainly can. It's just another component we can add. And when we get together, we can report out on that as well.
But wouldn't this be in Mr. Degman's plans, though? I mean, we're trying to do cost savings, right, everywhere and anywhere?
It is, but it's actually, the problem with moving to the other trays is it costs more money. The trays we're buying right now cost, you know, two to three times less than the biodegradable trays. So we weren't introducing items that actually cost more.
Right, but what about using trays with dishwashers, maybe in the long run?
Yeah, no, the problem with that is, at this point, I don't believe any of our schools have active dishwashers that are working. Most of the schools have not used dishwashers for trays for a number of years. That I can get you an update for, though, when we get together.
All right, I just think it should be all part of the restructuring of the food service plan because maybe for whatever the initial cost is in the long run, it might be cheaper to wash these. It may not be, but I'm just saying, we should have all that available to us when we look at the report that we're gonna get for restructuring our food service.
I can do that for you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Repose, the motion carries. The last motion of the evening by James Leary, requests the superintendent and the curriculum Subcommittee to review the school committee's policy as it relates to the age students at that school. The focus reflects students from outside the Lowell public schools entering our system and are forced to repeat kindergarten or any other grade that have already successfully passed due strictly to the existing age policy. Seconded by, Ms. Lahey, on the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. It's coming from a couple of parents that are faced with a situation where their children have passed kindergarten either at a local parochial school or have moved into the Lowell school system from outside the district. And they have successfully passed kindergarten and are now, because of what our policy exists of today, going through kindergarten again when they could be in first grade. I know this is complex. I've had good detailed discussions with Assistant Superintendent Murphy regarding issues with it, positive and against. I'd like just to have the curriculum Subcommittee meet, to have a good discussion about it, maybe make recommendations to look at a change in the policy so folks, young folks who have passed kindergarten or passed a different grade when they moved into the system could take the grade that they would normally would, not because of their age. For example, I think our cutoff date's September 1st. If you're born October 1st, it's one month difference. If you already passed it, if you came from, you know, either, I don't know, Jeanne Dark or if you came from Austin, Texas, you wouldn't be forced to repeat that grade. And I think there should be an element in, of either the superintendent or the school principal or both approving that after the appropriate diagnostic. But again, we can send this to Subcommittee to have a thorough review. And definitely, I know Assistant Superintendent Murphy will give it due diligence and look at any negative side to this as well. Thank you.
Ms. Fattackati?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd also like to know how many children... I'd also like to know how many children this affects per year. As Mr. Leary indicated, he got calls from a couple of people. So I'd be interested to know how many people this does affect. If it affects a huge number of people, then we really have to take a look at it. If it doesn't, I still think we have to take a look at it, but I think we need to be careful about changing a policy. Because if the wording isn't tight enough, then somebody can say, oh, I homeschooled my child in kindergarten and they successfully passed. What are we going to do about that? So I think we have to be careful when we're looking at changing that policy. So I'd like to get an idea from Assistant Superintendent Murphy of how many children that would also entail, how many children we'd be looking at every year. Thank you.
I did have a couple of parents contact me about this particular issue, and I'm very thankful that Committee Member Leary brought this motion forward. And I think that it is, it's not a large problem, but it is a large problem for some parents whose children are just on the borderline of starting first grade or kindergarten, whatever. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, the motion carries. That's the, that finalizes the motions for this evening. Subcommittee reports, the Ad-Hoc Subcommittee on School Building Naming Report and Approval of the Minutes of September 16, 2009. Regina Fattakanti?
Thank you, Your Honor. We did have our discussion regarding school building naming. It was the bench that was named for the young men last, at our last meeting. The issue we did not discuss, however, Your Honor, is when I was a member of this committee, and I don't think I'm sitting here with anybody who was a member then, but a former colleague placed a motion on our agenda that said every school building, every administrative office will bear the name of former Superintendent Henry Maraz. Well, our administrative office for the Lowell School Department is moving to the Rogers School. So, Your Honor, what you see in front of you is the compilation of how the committee, or how the Subcommittee on Building Naming would like the building to be reflected. We all believed that the name of Edith Norris Rogers was so vital and so important, and her reputation was so amazing, that we would never want to lose that off that building.
I agree.
So what you see in front of you is a compilation of what the two names would reflect. It would say Lowell Public Schools, Henry J. Maraz Central Administration Offices, Edith Norris Rogers School, because, Your Honor, this building will continue to be used as a school facility, 43 Highland Street, Lowell, Mass. So this is what we would like the moniker of the building to reflect. I see the superintendent shaking her head no. Is that a problem? Oh, okay. So that's what the school committee would like the building name to reflect, Your Honor, and we would need to take a vote tonight to have it reflect that.
It would be appropriate to keep the school under the Edith Norris Rogers name, but also appropriate to recognize the dedicated years of Henry Maraz.
Right. And the reality is, we have a policy, a school committee policy, that says Henry Maraz's name will remain attached to school administration building.
Yes. Motion to approve by Connie Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary, to adopt the recommendation brought forward by Regina Fattakanti, chairperson of the Subcommittee on Naming Buildings. Roll call.
Ms. Fattakanti?
Yes.
Mr. Lahey?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven yays, approved. Accept the report.
Any other reports?
No, accept the report, report filed, placed on file.
Accept the report as a report of progress and placed on file with Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lahey. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The Subcommittee report has been accepted and placed on file. The Joint Curriculum and Lowell High School Report and Approval of the Minutes of October 5, 2009. Connie Martin, Curriculum Chair, Jackie Doherty, Lowell High School Chair. Who would like to...
I can do this first, part of the report, Mr. Mayor. This was a joint meeting of both the Curriculum and Lowell High School Subcommittees. In attendance were myself as chair for the Curriculum Committee, Jackie Doherty as chair for the Lowell High School Subcommittee, and members Regina Fattakanti, James Leary, and Dave Conway. Also, John Lahey was in attendance. We had from Administration, the superintendent, as well as the deputy superintendent, and from the high school, Mr. Smarres, the headmaster, Dr. Jack, our curriculum director, and several members of the Lowell High School staff were in attendance as well. We had five topics that we had reviewed. The first was the, our status currently, our accreditation status with the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. We are at the five-year point, which does kind of, is the opportunity when the high school needs to really resubmit, to inform this accreditation agency of any significant changes that would have happened during the course of our five years of accreditation. And to, you know, so they're informed as to, you know, any major changes. And we've had quite a few. The information that was relayed to NEASC really focused on what has happened at the high school due to budget cuts. The reduction in staff, the reduction in administrators, the, really, those were the key things. There was also some discussion of the reduction in student population. The NAE, I want to say NAEC, but it's not, NEASC, did approve after having reviewed the report. So we are all set for the continuing five years of the accreditation period, and that we will be, you know, we've gone through the midpoint review and will be entering into the self-study portion of these final five years in about two years, in 2011. And that was accepted as a report of progress. We also received, I think, a very encouraging report focused on the MCAS results at the high school. I think Dr. Jack very proudly, and rightly so, told us, reported to us that every subgroup, you know, at the high school has made AYP, adequate yearly progress, in the area of mathematics. And I am the first to say that that is an extraordinary accomplishment. We are, you know, again, for myself, extremely pleased and proud to see those kinds of results. It speaks to the caliber of administration, teachers, and most specifically, our students. And I think that that is a remarkable accomplishment. In an urban district like ours, it is extraordinary to see that success. And it does prove indeed that with the right supports and resources, all students are really capable of being successful. And I think that Lowell is a place where we can point to a lot of those really extraordinary supports and resources that have been offered to our students, and they've made the most of it. So that's great. You know, there are certainly some areas within the, our MCAS kind of spectrum of results that we still know need additional work within the English, within the English Language Arts area. But I think, again, one of the great real claims to fame of this report is being able to look at the increase in the number of students who are moving kind of across the spectrum, moving up in these stages, you know, moving into the advanced and proficient categories. We're seeing greater and greater numbers in that area. And in this year, we've really reached the state average, which, again, for an urban district, is a really, I think, significant accomplishment. So that was an encouraging and optimistic report to get at the high school Subcommittee. The next topic we discussed was the improvements and changes to the health curriculum that's in place at the high school. We've discussed this in a lot of different arenas. And I, again, the efforts of the high school staff and the health instructors, I think, has given us, I think, what is a comprehensive and thoughtful approach to reproduction education, introducing it into our health classes at an appropriate time, early in their time at the high school, recognizing that it's not the kind of material that we can really leave until junior, senior year. We need to ensure that our students have accurate and comprehensive information to make good decisions. Looking at the materials, we have basically two curriculum options that our health teachers will be able to choose from. Both cover the, all the same information, do it with a slightly different slant, just in terms of the, kind of the way the information is presented, there's no difference in the actual information being communicated. I want to be clear about that. But it will, I think, give our students the information they need to make, again, well-founded decisions. And we will retain, as always, the opportunity for parents who are not comfortable with their students going through a sex ed class, they have the option to opt out as they historically always have. They will be informed, so parents will be well-advised as to what's going on in their students' classrooms, and then they can make the best choice for their students. So I think, again, this represents a great deal of work, and I think what we've come up with is a solid first step. And I think we'll be looking to see what the results of it are when it is implemented in this preliminary, this first school year. We discussed the Lowell High School video use policy. This was as a result of a request I had made, really just wanting to reiterate the point that the use of film and movies in classrooms can have, you know, a real impact and can be a real positive educational tool. But it is critically important that all teachers are aware that academics need to be what drives those choices. And I think, you know, and I had said it myself in the meeting, it's the kind of thing that periodically we need to review. Periodically, we need to reemphasize our commitment to this policy. I think the headmaster agreed with that. And that, you know, he has had specific conversations with the department heads at the high school so that we can ensure that all of our teachers are well-aware of exactly how to make appropriate choices for their classes, to ensure that these types of media tools are being used appropriately. We also had an opportunity that was presented by Mr. Smarres to basically have two teachers who have requested the opportunity to really intern at Lowell High School. These are two individuals who are currently teaching in Cambodia, and they would be really, again, serving as interns in a classroom, working with one of our real master teachers at the high school who's excited about the prospect. And this would really be an opportunity for these two individuals to see best practices at work. They are focusing on a number of different, it is a history-based project, talking about the focus, the content focus is on genocide and the instruction of incorporating that into a social studies slash history curriculum, and positive ways to do that to ensure that students are getting, you know, the, again, the clearest information without the kind of sometimes political slant that can come with that, that heart-wrenching topic. That was approved. And then finally, we did have a number of announcements from Mr. Smarres, just to share with our viewing audience. On Sept, we did have it on September 16th, College Career Day at Lowell High School. We had over 250 individuals who attended. We had, just recently, just this week, what's today, the 7th? So, tonight, as we speak, freshman night is happening, freshman academy parent meeting is happening. And coming up on October 28th, Lowell High School will be hosting a meeting addressing the use of prescription drugs by teens, by youth. It is scheduled, again, as I said, on the 28th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. I know that because of some great interest on the part of Jackie Doherty and the rest of the committee, we have decided to push back our meeting on that evening, our scheduled school committee meeting, so that members of the school committee can attend. And I would submit all of that in total as a report of progress from the Curriculum High School Subcommittee.
Thank you.
It has to be approved by the committee.
Madam Superintendent?
If I could ask Ms. Martin that, I believe that we also need a vote of the change of the time. About any, please?
Yes.
That is correct.
We'll do that. But let's accept the report as a report of progress.
Move approval.
Move approval by Ms. Fattakanti, seconded by Mr. Conway. All in favor, signify by saying aye. And the vote on moving the school committee meeting, October 28th to 8:00 p.m. rather than 7:00 p.m., so we could all be part of this very important session. Move for approval by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Leary. Roll call.
Ms. Fattakanti?
Yes.
Mr. Lahey?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
Ms. Lahey?
Thank you, Your Honor. On the last issue of the seminar that we're going to have on the 28th, I just wanted to make sure I'd spoken to the superintendent that we should aggressively get that message out on our side as well. So maybe a connected and a letter to definitely go home. I understand the city or the police department's going to try to coordinate something with the radio and newspaper as well. So, you know, very important that we get as many people involved in this as we can.
What I understand, Superintendent of Police, Kenneth Flavelli, District Attorney of Middlesex County, Gerald Leonie, State Representative Golden, many other people will be there speaking. And it is a very, very serious issue, and it has to be addressed. And the only way you can address it is to the students and get that message out there. And happy you brought that forward, John. Ms. Doherty, do you have a report as well, too?
Yes, I do, Your Honor. I'll be quick. The portion of the meeting that just was about Lowell High School, we had a number of items we looked at. One was the schedule and number of classes. As my colleagues know, we did reduce the teaching staff at the high school by 25 teachers during the last budget season. And there was concern about how that was impacting specifically class sizes at the high school. And although, you know, the news isn't great, as we expected, we did see some classes, class sizes go up, we got a chart of information that it looks like 10% of the classes overall have 30 or more students in them, based on the numbers we got last night. We also looked at class size in terms of balancing them out, and there was some discussion about, there were some glitches with the computer program this time, and some students didn't get their full schedule, so then when they had to get classes added on, that didn't help the balancing of the classes. So we're looking for a much more equitable share of students for the January semester. We'll be getting an update on that. So we had some discussion about that. We also talked about the substitute teacher scheduler that's currently at the high school. Your Honor may recall that that position was eliminated during the budget period, and it was asked for the high school to come up with a different approach to that. Well, after some discussion, it was determined that right now, that seems to make the most sense. It's a part-time paying position. The person who does it has quite a bit of experience at the high school. It's kind of a very specialized thing that this person has been doing. So it was the recommendation of the Lowell High School Subcommittee, or a motion by Ms. Fattakanti, seconded by Mr. Conway, to recommend to the committee as a whole to approve funding for this current task during the transition the high school's going through with the loss of staffing that they've had, both at the administrative level and with the teachers. And that we need, everybody recognizing that we need some plan for the future. But the current decision was to stay with the way it's been done last year. We deferred the scholarship report because we need to get more information about kind of a summary of how scholarships were awarded, that we're going to look at how we're doing that every year. So that'll come up later. And then there were some updates from the high school. Although we had excellent MCAS scores, as my colleague mentioned, we still have between 400 and 500 students who are falling within this, in this 220 to 238 range on the MCAS score. And the state requires that students in that range, we have to come up with education, educational proficiency plans to help them get those skills that they're still lacking.
This is basically the same report as Connie Martin presented?
Did you mention the proficiency?
No, okay. No, this is all one, yeah.
But this is a separate, yeah. And then we also got the news that the PSAT test will be offered to all sophomores and juniors. I believe they're starting next week. And that tutoring at the high school will end on November 30th, and this is going to be a real loss for us. The high school's been using the Shannon Grant money to provide some of this tutoring, and that is due to run out by the end of November. So even though the library will still be open daily, the services that were currently in... So even though the library will still be open daily, the services that we're currently offering there, if a student wants one-on-one tutoring, those services will not be available unless we can find other funding, and the high school is pursuing that, looking at grants and some other ways to provide that kind of assistance to students in need. And that, the meeting adjourned at 9:00 p.m., and I would take that as a motion, a report of progress.
Accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Mr. Leary. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The report has been accepted. Placed on file?
Right here. This shouldn't have your, you're going to find this, it should be a roll call.
Oh, the motion on the substitute schedule, I'm sorry. We need a roll call on that.
Right here. That's money.
So that was a motion by Ms. Conway.
On the substitute schedule?
Yes, seconded by Ms. Fattacante, to recommend to the committee as a whole.
Okay. Move to approve by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Leary. Roll call.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven ayes, approved.
Can I just ask a favor of the committee for the meeting, October 28th? Just see if we can keep the agenda light, not too many motions, because we could be here till 11:00 p.m. So, who, just, Ms. Leahy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to make a few comments on the last Subcommittee notes. Some of the points that we went over, the schedule, number of students in the classes, transition with the change in staffing, these were very important points. We probably took about an hour to discuss this, so I think that it's very important that we stay on this. I think that we need to schedule another high school Subcommittee meeting to go over this. After speaking with the headmaster, you know, even though we only had five items on the agenda, it just takes time, and we need to really go at this in depth because we're doing so much more with less, and the term that we've coined over the last couple of years, doing more with less, is obsolete now. We're doing more without any money. I mean, that's what the reality is now. We're not doing more with less, we're doing more without, without much. So what I, you know, what I wanted to go, what I wanted to discuss more in depth than what we talked about at the meeting is some of the class offerings, you know? We need to make sure that we can utilize our computer labs and our computers for these students, that they can do maybe some online courses for their, for their, no, the credits, but the other classes, the...
College, college classes.
Yeah, college courses, and it'll come to me after, but, you know, we need to have more classes to engage these students.
Electives.
Electives, thank you. Because we had some discussion about what we use at the high school. We use these intern positions, and I exactly, I didn't find that to be most productive use of time. I'd like, rather see the kids taking some sort of online computer course. The other issue that we talked about is we have, now we really have 30, 32 kids in a class, in a math class. So you have 30 kids in a class, 10 could be on IEP or 504, and, you know, we're not meeting their needs. They need to have more close supervision. So what I was discussing with Superintendent Mulligan earlier was maybe we need to open up the doors, and we need to think of different ways to help these students out. So maybe we offer, maybe we try to work with the state colleges and get some of these student teachers in there, so we can bring another teacher into the classroom at no cost. We're meeting our special, our sped needs, and we're benefiting the high school. So I think those things need to be explored because we did, we cut so many, so much money and so much staff out of the high school this year, you know, we really need to find ways to do more down there. As we all know, we're not going, we're not going to, the funds aren't going to improve. If anything, they're getting worse. So we really need to buckle down, we need to work now with the unions while we're in negotiations and say, look, we've got to get through this together, you know? There's no money for the next few years. We're going to be losing more positions. What's the best way to save ourselves, support these students, support the high school, support the schools, and get through this? So we really need to focus on this. It's just an unfortunate situation everybody's going through. So hopefully, we can schedule another high school Subcommittee meeting and go through some of these, these issues more in depth. So that's all I really had to say on that. Thank you.
Mr. Leary, on the Subcommittee report?
Just quickly, on the Subcommittee report, I think it was a very good meeting, and some excellent news came out regarding the MCAS scores, and I think that should be celebrated. It was a great job by not only the high school staff, but the middle school staff and elementary staff, getting these people prepared for it. That should be kudos and two thumbs up. An issue regarding the substitute coordinator, last year, we discussed why are we paying $15,000 in the budget? What the headmaster did, and just to explain this to make sure folks understand it, what the headmaster did basically is take a look at the costs for the substitutes that we're paying at the high school, and actually, the person in this position is being paid out of the substitute budget. There isn't a line on him, that has been removed. And the goal, I think, what we discussed at the meeting is really for that position to take a look at ways of minimizing costs, hopefully, for the substitutes, as well as looking at alternatives. Now, it may not work, but at least we're going to take a look at it, and I think that goes into what Mr. Leahy is saying, is looking at things differently. And I think this person in this position has done the position for a long time, has run the information, the data, that at the next high school Subcommittee, we can take a look at that data and start, hopefully, making some changes to save costs if where possible. So I think the whole meeting was an excellent meeting, a lot of good news, a lot of constructive information discussed, and I think going forward, you know, we're going to save, hopefully, a lot of money in different areas because of the hard work of the administration at the high school. And as Mr. Leahy articulated, we made some significant cuts to the administration at the high school. So I think that they should, you know, we are all doom and gloom sometimes, but I think hats should go off to them for doing a really good job. Thank you.
You know, I'm preaching to the choir. We cut approximately $8 million out of the school department budget, and $8 million into some small communities, that is their budget. And what Mr. Leary just pointed out, I'm proud to be a chairman of this school committee and this school department. The employees have stepped to the plate and gone above and beyond, and, you know, we just have to pull together, and, you know, there's rumors out there that there could be some more cuts coming from Beacon Hill, and let's just hope and pray those cuts are not Chapter 70 mine, and we just keep our fingers crossed. Moving on with the agenda, reports of the superintendent.
Thank you, Your Honor. We've closed in your packet for this evening of the priorities, the district priorities for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Memorandum of Understanding, and this is the agreement that we have with the department with regards to how we will proceed to improve our most underperforming schools. We are a district, a commissioner's district, and we have and are receiving $460,000 to address school improvement concerns in various schools across the system, and this report outlines some of those initiatives that we presently have been working with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on, as well as our team of teachers and administrators, and as well Connie Martin joined us for the day with the department as well, to go over these particular initiatives and how they will target our concerns around areas of performance in these particular schools. Is it the wish of the committee for me to read the report, or is it fine as it is? Okay, thank you. Okay.
The next is the personnel report?
The personnel report, as submitted.
Move for approval by Ms. Martin, all in favor? Seconded by Ms. Fattacante, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The report has been accepted and placed on file. Okay. List of eligible teachers?
Do we do personnel?
What's that?
Do we do personnel?
Do we do personnel, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, you just did it.
Oh, I see, okay.
A motion was made to accept that report.
Okay.
And now we're on the eligible teachers?
Eligible teachers, any questions? That part?
Move approval.
Move approval by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Doherty, all in favor? Signify by saying aye. All those reports have been accepted and placed on file.
Your Honor, there is one issue that was in our packet, it's not on the agenda. We probably need to vote on this tonight, and that is the headmaster search information. So I'm going to make a motion that we suspend the rules. I see you whispering to me, June. Make a motion that we suspend the rules to bring forward this document for discussion, and the document, Your Honor, is the, it's titled Headmaster Search.
Motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Martin, all in favor of the suspension? Signify by saying aye.
Thank you, Your Honor.
The suspensions are in order.
Thank you. So I did have this motion on the agenda a couple of meetings ago. I did ask the superintendent to bring forward a document that would begin the process of replacing Bill Samaras, and this is going to be a difficult process because I can't even begin to imagine what that job description looks like. Put out this fire, put out that fire, put out this fire, you know, attend, attend a guidance meeting, attend this meeting, and run the, you know, one of the largest high schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. But this is a document that the superintendent has prepared, it's an excellent document. It, it highlights what we should be doing as a community and as a school system to begin the process. So I'd like the superintendent to go through the document so that we can understand exactly her thought process of putting this together. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Has Mr. Samaras indicated he wants to retire? Madam Superintendent?
No, he has not at this time, and that's why I put it in your FYI packet on Friday night, just out of respect for Mr. Samaras, as he has told me that he is contemplating doing that in very short order, but I did want the committee to have the information. I didn't want you to wait for that information, so that's why it was put in your packet.
Your Honor, I'm in no rush to push Mr. Samaras out the door. As you know, I have worked with Mr. Samaras for a very long time, and he's an excellent headmaster, but he did indicate that one more year would be at the end of his tenure. Since he has not communicated otherwise that he was, that he is staying, I take that to mean Mr. Samaras is going to enter a wonderful phase of retirement after, after another year. And unless, and Mr. Samaras, unless he had communicated this to us, you know, which he had ample time to do, I think that it is his, it is his intent to retire.
Well, I would imagine any employee intending to retire must pass in paperwork to their superiors, and has that happened, Madam Superintendent?
Well, that would go to the retirement board, Your Honor.
No, Your Honor.
Well, I don't know. Mr. Conway?
Mr. Mayor, perhaps we could, it might be wise to delay this until...
I would like a concrete answer from Mr. Samaras before we, you know, I don't want to give the impression that, Mr. Samaras, you're out. I don't want to give that impression, unless he is willing to come forward and say he's going to retire, and I haven't heard that from Mr. Samaras. Have you, has anyone heard that?
Well, we heard it last year, but we heard it last year when he asked for one more year of his contract, and the school committee voted one year, which would be the next school year. So that was my understanding, and I believe it was the understanding of this entire committee, that it would be a one-year extension, and he is not, so I'm going to ask you, Your Honor, through you, to the superintendent, has he communicated to you his intent not to retire?
As I just finished saying to the committee, it was out of respect for Mr. Samaras. I have had a conversation in short order. I do believe he will be submitting that particular paperwork, but that's why I didn't want you to have to wait, that's why I put it in the packet on Friday night, so you would have the information, and that Mr. Samaras would have the respect of, of the process to announce to us in short order.
Mr. Conway?
As I was, as I was saying a couple minutes ago, perhaps we could delay the discussion on this, on this job description until the next school committee, and perhaps at that particular time, there might be something more formal on the table.
Motion to delay, seconded, wait a second. Seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor of the motion to delay? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You post. You know, if Mr. Samaras, the way I tell, if he wants to retire, I'm going to wish him the best, because he's worked hard. But I don't want to plant the seed, say, you know what? It's time for you to go. Maybe he doesn't want to go. I, you know, no one's come up...
And, and Your Honor, with all due respect, I think this committee would appreciate if Mr. Samaras didn't want to go, then absolutely, he should convey that to the school committee and to the superintendent.
Well, maybe after this discussion tonight, he will.
Okay. I would have hoped that he would have done that after the last discussion, but because, because he's, you know, he's certainly eligible to submit to the superintendent his intent not to retire, and then the superintendent would be, it would be her decision whether or not to rescind that retirement.
And I agree with you, Regina, that if Mr. Samaras is planning to retire, we should act on the proper way of looking, a search for...
But we can certainly wait another, until the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Leahy, on this issue?
Yes, I just wanted to comment on that, too. I mean, out of respect for all parties, I just want to make sure that, you know, we find out what's going on, and we should, because we don't want to delay the search any longer than we have to. So I agree, you know, with what you said, but I don't want to leave my colleague hanging out in the wind here. I mean, we need to really know so we can plan ahead and get, and move on this. Thank you.
I've been over to high school, like, like all of you have, during lunch hour, during busy hours and so forth, and Mr. Samaras is the headmaster, but he has a tremendous staff at that school, also working in conjunction with him, and the chemistry is wonderful. And, and, you know, I don't, you know, I don't see any red flag going up as far as I'm concerned. Why would the high school be rated the 25th best high school in the state? So let's move on with the agenda. New business, convention conference requests, Madam Superintendent? Or we want to take and make a motion to accept all?
Accept them in their entirety, Your Honor?
Thank you. Motion to accept, and it's an entirely by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Conway, roll call.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven ayes, approved.
Okay, communications?
Under communication, the request for a liquor license for October 21st, 2009, for the Lowell High School Distinguished Alumni Awards.
Your Honor, can we do a roll call on that, please, sir? Thank you.
Yes, yes. Roll call, please, on the request for a liquor license. I can... Roll call?
Well, I need it first and a second.
Motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Leary, roll call.
Ms. Fattacante?
Present.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six ayes, one present, approved.
The election of the Massachusetts Association School Committee officials, voting delegates. I believe we, we also need an alternative, an alternate, but that's well, right? So who, who are we nominating? Ms. Doherty, would you like to represent the committee once again?
Well, someone has to nominate.
I would nominate Jackie.
Nominate by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Conway to nominate school committee member, Jackie Doherty, and we need an alternative.
Want to have a roll call on this one first?
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven ayes, approved.
Now, who would like to be the alternate?
In case she can't show up.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Conway, our newest member of the school committee.
Oh, I would second that.
Move, move to nominate Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Fattacante as an alternate, roll call. Welcome to the...
Ms. Fattacante, a resounding yes. Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Um, House Bill four-eight-one?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor, through you, too, my colleagues. You may recall, if you look at the third sheet in the little packet about House Bill number forty-one, that this was a resolution that came from the Lowell School Committee at last year's MASCE meeting. And I'm very excited to say that, uh, you can see by the front page, we got, uh, support from many of our representatives, and certainly all the, the Lowell delegation supported this, uh, bill. It will be heard October twenty at one o'clock before the Joint Commission on Education. And just if I could, uh, formally thank Assistant Superintendent Anne Murphy for doing so, not only some work initially with putting this bill together, but as we prepare to be part of this hearing, um, Assistant Superintendent Murphy checked into what this would mean for Lowell schools, if we can get this bill passed, if we can get this law changed. Last year, we had fifteen students who fell into this category at a cost of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the district, three-quarters of a million dollars. That included, after the state reimbursed us, the circuit breaker amount, which I think last year it was forty percent reimbursement. Currently, we have twenty-two students who are being sent out of district, who fall into this category at a cost of one point three million dollars to the district. That's before we get our state reimbursement. So that number would come down, but it's clearly a significant amount of money is coming out of the local budget to these out-of-district placements that could be impacted by this bill. So, I'm, I'm very excited by the possibility that, uh, we might be able to impact some change at the State House that would really help us with, uh, our, our budget next year. So, thank you.
So you wanna take a roll call vote on this to get support of the committee?
Well, you, yeah, it's really just a good, because I, we, we voted to support this resolution a year ago, so it's just an update, it's just an update that the resolution has now got a bill number, and it's gonna be heard on October twenty.
Well, I mean, the only way we can get our message out there is if we endorse it by a roll call vote.
They did last year, but they, yeah, they already endorsed it.
We did endorse it last year, Your Honor. This is really a communication of the efforts of, uh, Ms. Dougherty in, in culminating this all together. So I make a motion to accept the communication, place it on file?
Motion to accept the communication, place it on file by Ms. Fatacanti, seconded by Ms. Dougherty, all in favor? Signify by saying aye. See the end of that. Um, I'd like to read a, a thank you note from the family of Mary Ann Crowe, and it reads, "The family of Mary Ann Crowe. Perhaps you sent a lovely card or sat quietly in a chair. Perhaps you sent a funeral spray. If so, we saw it there. Perhaps you spoke the kindest words as any friend could say. Perhaps you were not there at all, just thought of us that day. Whatever you did to console our hearts, we thank you so much, whatever the part. Gratefully yours, Mary Ann Nochuck." And before we...
Well, can they accept the...
Accept the report, accept the communication, place it on file, Your Honor?
Accept the communication, place it on file by Ms. Fatacanti, seconded by Mr. Conway, all in favor? Signify by saying aye. It has been reported, recorded and placed on file. Uh, before we adjourn, I would just like to offer my thanks and the committee's thanks to the Parent Information Center, John Dakota. We've been in session now five weeks. The children are being transported to the schools, they're picked up in the morning, and they're picked up and dropped at their homes at night, and, uh, Madam Superintendent, that, that department deserves accolades, and, uh, if any members of the committee would like to, Mr. Leary?
Just real quick, Mayor, and thank you for, uh, bringing that up. I think the folks in the Parent Information Center with the closing of the Rogers School, and that they're also the first to be moved over to the central, our, our offices at the Rogers School have done an excellent job, and under really trying circumstances. So I think, kudos to them for doing an outstanding job from the committee. Thank you.
How many students do we transport a day, Madam Superintendent? Is it something like eight thousand or nine thousand?
Yeah, approximately. Seven now.
That's, that's incredible, and those children are brought to school safely, they're brought home at night safely. Huge responsibility, and, uh, I can't say enough about that department, so. Please, on the meeting October twenty-eighth, if you can keep the agenda light, and, uh, keep the Subcommittee reports down, the motions down, we can go to Lowell High School and, um, be part of a great, great conversation that needs to be done. With that said, I'll detain a motion to adjourn by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. Thank you.
All in favor, you should, you should say all in favor for adjourned, but... Okay. Okay. It wasn't a bad meeting.
What?